By 30, I'll call the meeting of the Ramsey County Commission for Order. Please join me in this ceremony and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undegowed and indivisible, with the liberty of justice for all.
The first item on the agenda would be the approval of the minutes from our previous meeting.
Moved and approved.
Motion and second to approve the minutes as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Minutes are approved. Approval of the agenda. You see the updated agenda on your desk. We added the NDACO 2021 delegate. We need to appoint somebody for that. That was added at the earlier today. Motion and second to approve the agenda as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Agenda is approved. Kevin, you are up.
All right. Start off with our projects we've done, our bridge rules done now. We put in four culverts in the county roads also, 24-inch culverts. Those are all done. I guess next our group will be starting like two weeks or a week and a half will be starting more road ditches. And then at the same time, we'll start putting those sewer systems in the outline shots. Any questions here?
Kevin, when we do a bridge replacement with culverts, county is normally responsible for bridges.
Right.
Does that revert back to townships for the culvert repairs or?
Nope, we generally, the way our policy reads is we come to the agreement with the township as to who's going to do maintenance and replacements. So anytime we take out a bridge, we typically take over the maintenance and replacements.
Good.
Generally, anything over what, 36 inches or something?
Our policy says 36 inches, but there's also a part where it's any navigable water or if they're responsible for, so that's where the bridge.
That's where the culvert's been cut in.
Now, we've got off in Prospect Township that was never a bridge, so it's kind of a gray area we've never had to deal with, so that's part of my, the next thing on my list here.
Perfect, continue.
Or I guess it's on the bottom, but anyway. The first one, the regional road conference is going to be held, which is usually held, I'd say it's going to be held in Sioux Falls this year. Rooms are $109 a night for two nights, and registration's $150. So the total's $368. I either drive down or ride with someone else. So I like the approval for the out-of-state travel for that.
Motion to approve.
Good motion and second to allow for the out-of-state travel for the road conference. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, and then just for your information, our coal prices are another 10%, but last two weeks ago, I had a stock order that I could get in before the increase went into effect. I think that was a $50,000 order, so we saved about five grand there.
What happened, hold up, it was just one or two percent. What happened to them days?
Yeah. Earlier we had a jump, it was 20%, now it's 10, so yeah, it's crazy, the steel prices. Okay, and then back to Prospect Township, they had a 72-inch culvert that rested out and collapsed on the last six feet. And I needed to order a new one, and it's going to cost 800, or $8,157,000.
Well, it's probably around that number. I mean, I like the 8,000 or better.
$8,157,000 and 70 cents. So motion to order a replace.
We have a motion and a second to approve the cost for the replacement of the culvert up in Prospect Township. $8157.70, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. $8157.70. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Are we paying that or we?
Just ordered for now.
Just ordered now, okay.
Okay, this is one that was never ever a bridge, so it's that gray area that we're talking about. And of course, we had taken our excavator back, the big excavator back for what we were renting, so maybe isn't quite big enough for this 72-inch charge. So I guess in the end, I'm probably going to end up paying for helping with the installment on this. Always seems right. There's like seven culverts in this spot, six of them are five footers and one's a six footer. So there's a lot of culverts there. It's a blue, if you look at the top of maps, it's a blue line, which according to Century Code, if it's a blue line on the top of the map, it's an habitable waterway. Somebody wrote on a piece of paper that that's how that goes.
There's six culverts there already?
Yeah.
And they're usable?
Yep.
Do you think it needs one more?
I don't know, we're just in the past.
We're just replacing the one that's rusted out.
We're replacing the one that rusted out, collapsed.
Yeah. So we're just basically keeping it the same as it was?
Exactly. Right.
It's just who's going to pay for the install? Who's going to get caught for that?
Huh?
County here is caught for that, installing it?
They're going to install it, and I guess right now I was thinking I helped them with it, but I didn't tell them that yet. It's on tape now. It's one of those sites that was never a bridge. Even back in 1958, I look back to all our records, in 1958, it was four arch culverts.
Always said.
So all culverts are.
Interesting. I don't have a problem helping put it in, but once we have our excavator ready, that's when I see us do it.
Yeah.
So if they can wait until next year, yeah.
And this is the instance where they can't, because it collapsed, and I mean, it's.
But there's already six there that are working, right?
Right.
Yeah, we'd have to have a pretty rough winter, we'd need more than six, right?
Yeah. And that's way around the beginning of the cooling too. So I guess it's a quarter of you guys feel, I mean it.
Well, what kind of money are you up to now? I mean, we're not going to rent the excavator again, so you have to hire somebody to come do it for us.
That's exactly right.
I would guess we should probably figure out what we think it's going to cost, and then, you know.
I think they're going to hire the contractor now, because they are happy with the contractor up there, and he's got time to do it, so.
Okay.
I'm guessing it's going to be three, four thousand, I don't know.
But that's the whole project.
That's the installation. We already, we are kind of obligated to paying for the culvert. That's part of our policy.
And whatever, yeah, I'm not a problem either, whatever.
Well, I'll keep you up to speed on that, so you know where we're at, I'm just. For now, we're just paying for the culvert. I guess that's all I got. We don't have a lot of these where they work bridges. I can maybe think of two or three other ones that were never ever bridges. But there's a lot of culverts there. One would be like a knee road. We talked about that earlier.
Yeah.
There was never ever a bridge there.
And there's got, you know, you look at that, and there's got to be, what, eight culverts?
There's got to be eight culverts there.
Yeah.
It's crazy that they put that many culverts and not a bridge.
Yeah, yeah.
Because bridges were pretty much the standard back then. They get a car.
Well, and that handles a lot of water. Well, it should anyway, but doesn't handle nearly enough to prevent flooding, so.
This site up on the prospect, like I said, it's sort of on the north end of the watershed. I think there's probably only three structures upstream from this one. I never looked at the size of them to compare.
Are all of them 72 inches bigger?
Five of them are five footers, and one, this one's a six footer.
Okay.
You can tell this one's been there longer than it was asked, because the bottom was completely rusted out, collapsed, I don't know, so.
So one of those deals, they started with three or four, and three or four aren't enough, and then they tacked on another, and then they tacked on another, and it still never solved the problem. They just kept putting culverts in, as long as they had enough man to push them.
It's one of, it comes down the road ditch, then goes underneath the road, and then goes back down the road ditch again, so it's two 90s in a row there. I mean, it's really tough. So it's probably part of the reason for all the culverts, is there's a kind of a bottom out there.
Well, thank you.
Yes, just good.
A little early for our hearing on tax exemption, so continuing on to new business, if that's okay with everybody. We have a homestead credit debatements, we have two of those in your packets.
Moved and approved.
Moved and seconded to approve the homestead credit debatements. All those, further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approve beer liquor license, one month yield tavern.
I have a question, just out of curiosity, say, one month as in they're paying a reduced rate, because it's only one month?
They just wanted it for.
They just wanted it for one month?
One month.
So they're not getting any advantage from it being only one month, like in terms of cost or anything, it's just they want it for a month?
Can't even look at these, I didn't think there was a problem with that. It's a wedding season permit, they just want to make sure they're about four to.
Yeah, I didn't have a problem with that, I was just wondering if, like, you know, did you ever approve the one-month permit? If it was a deal where they said, well, if we do it for a month, we only have to pay one twelfth of the price or something like that, but, I mean, it's not, the permit's expensive to start with. We have a pretty reasonable one at times, I would make that so. I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the one-month beer alcohol license for the yield tavern. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion approved, approve special permit for the yield tavern. And this kind of goes along with that one month. Motion to approve, second.
Right.
We have motion and a second to approve the special permit for the yield tavern. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And then the other item on the agenda would be the approval of the 2021 NDACO delegate. This is done every odd year. At the, we put an Association of Counties Conference, and they had a list of convention delegates. Last one for Ramsey County was Commissioner Wakefield. Lucas, do you know if you're planning to attend that conference?
I may very well be able to, but at the moment, it's uncertain which date that is. It's all depending.
It's October 3rd through the 5th.
3rd through the 5th? I should be able to attend, yeah.
Would you be interested in being the delegate at that convention?
If that's the role of the commissioner, I'd like it.
All right.
Yeah, I'm sure you can go, yeah. I'm not sure I can go. Well, then I make the motion, we appoint Commissioner Wakefield as the delegate.
Okay. And motion and a second to appoint Commissioner Wakefield as commission, or convention delegate. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner Wakefield.
Thank you all.
And I'll have a room for you, sir, too. You're welcome.
Visitors and delegations. We have none, we have any announcements anybody would care to make?
Can I just bring one thing up?
Absolutely.
And I, what did they leave it on my guess? I got the email too about this, it's just, and I'll pass it on to Kevin, because it's, they sent a letter, must be this engineer, sort of engineering the project, to go overlay, milling overlay, intersection realignments, and then overlaying the west area parking lot over on Highway 2 East from Devil's Lake out to the west area, I believe. And I was just wondering if we have any comments or anything that we'd like to include with that, and I think we have until the 23rd of August. They emailed me directly for some reason, I don't know why, and then the mail came to me as well. Oh, you got one as well? And you got one too? Okay, well, maybe I'm not doing that all special for a little bit, I don't know.
Second page, said we have until the 23rd.
Yeah. I just, I read the email when they sent it, and I thought it's kind of weird that, but they must have sent it to, not everybody, you did.
Well, I got one.
Oh, you did.
I got it at home.
Okay. Just figured I'd make mention, because I wasn't sure if I was in alone or not, I didn't think we would have anything to add to it, but I figured it was worth mentioning.
I did sit on a team's meeting, had a team meeting already on this, and at that meeting, they did ask if any of the commissioners had any interest at this time, and I said, not that I know of, I mean, we don't have any railway out there, we don't have any progress out there, so, but I said, if anything comes up, I'm sure that did not.
Well, I think in the past, we've been pretty good about sharing, you think that there should be better intersections and maybe not 4,000 of them, so there's one every 50 feet. I had an opportunity one day to talk to the surveyor out there. And, you know, quite a ways I did, he said, I can't believe how many crossovers, crossovers there is on this highway. So I wouldn't be surprised if some of them go away. Well, that's not the. It's not our fault. No, and we, we shared that.
We shared when the railroad was raising, when the railroad, they took a lot of wood away. Like out west, they took a lot away. From the railroad we got raised? We got a lot. When they had on, in the highway last year, they took some more out.
Other than the ones that are there, the one that had section lines.
The main one. The little ones that remained, oh, a few section lines disappeared.
Well, they had to get township approval for that, so. And that one that, you know, west of my place there, they took out. Kind of wish they would have left it in, but that wasn't my call, and, you know, so. Well, I know there's a.
I get the ones I wanted to use much, that was just used.
Yeah.
And from east of town, it's a development down the highway, east of town happened more for housing developments and stuff, so there was one put in, and then another one put in, and then another one put in, so it's going to be a little bit harder pulling some of those, because then people already have to drive back to an on-ramp. People are going to get a little neighborful, like, oh, we're going to fry. Yeah, or, well, you know, some, there's private insurance. It's going to be interesting to see what they do with it. We volunteered that information, I wouldn't drive to fry. He just, he just said, there's a lot of people to survey. Yeah, there's a lot of them, I said. It's funny. We've had this discussion.
Interesting to see.
I think at this time, you know, where the section lines go into the road, they're going to make those like 90s, that's part of the project, there's three of them. And they're looking at one turn lane, probably the bean pile somewhere in that area, and then additional one. And well, the speed limit, they're certainly going to reduce the speed limit through that section now, but other than that, nothing's in concrete. So they're still looking at a turn right end and.
Yeah, he was just surveying this guy, you know. I just turned to you, I mentioned, and you started his gas station supply.
Later, I'm working out of my own, there were several feet, there are lanes. It's going to be interesting between us and Dakota Driving and binding.
Yeah, how they're going to fit them.
Yeah, because there's not even, I don't believe there's a thousand feet between Dakota Driving and Binding, it's close, but they would still have to move it, because that's the new.
Yeah.
Four lane setting on our highway rule.
Well, and part of that concern was when this all came on our plate back in 16 or something, when we were lobbying them to put a turn into binding, because it was, you know, such, and they said, we don't want to stack turns on top of turns, but it's like, well, you know, that corner, and then it was, there was no turn there, it was just nasty. We were lucky we got that turnoff put in, but yeah, now it's going to be stacked on top stacked, so then you get the problem, somebody's going to take, put their blinker on, thinking they're jumping in the second turn lane, and then they're in the first, and it'll take some getting used to.
I think we've got to figure out our issue with Dakota Driving now. They're going to probably take, if that goes through, or south of trains, they're probably going to leave our approach and take Dakota Driving's out. So that way, the trucks should come into that front.
And they just.
And be off the highway instead of sitting on the highway, clogging the whole intersection.
Well, that's.
And I was fine with it, because it gives us better access with our vessels and equipment going on the highway, and keeps our trucks out the highway, so I'm going to be a lot safer.
Should have been a frontage drove in through there, you know.
Yeah, sure, had a tight frontage all the way back, crossroads all the way back to the gas station.
Yeah.
It would have been a lot more sense. Overpass that. What happened to us?
We still have about seven minutes to go before our hearing begins. Ed, do we want to bring up anything with LEC and?
Yeah, we can, yes. What's your, have you, concentration of Rob and Ed?
Well, as everybody's aware, that we've got the non-compliance order from the DOCR about two weeks ago now, indicating some issues with, and it's more towards, lean towards staffing, we're going to need to reduce the number of inmates that we were housing down from 105 that were licensed to down to 50, which put everybody in a scramble mode, because we were sitting with a lot more than 50 in there, and Ramsey County ourselves, we were sitting at 57, I believe, wasn't it, Bo?
We had the highest population.
Yeah, and we still do, and, you know, so that created an issue of where we're going to go with, with our prisoners, and, you know, Bo and Sheriff Nelson, working with the judges and worked out some.
Yeah, we're below the cap right now. It's a 50% hard cap, we're at 40 as of today. We are still working with Rob to figure out what we can do to help train and get our jail population a little bit under control. This is not a common, or this is not a unique problem, this, there are other facilities all over that are having the same problem. Can't keep staff, you can't keep staff, you can't keep members high, so it's kind of a, you know, three cups on the table, move them here, move them there, kind of deal, so we're doing the best we can right now.
I think you have 15 or 18 federals on this county, and we were able to move them, and they had some other extras, and they were able to move all of them, so.
Yeah.
We expected it to be 75, and when it came down, it came to that day, we were down to 50. There was no negotiating that day, it was, that was it.
That was a hard Wednesday. We improved.
That was the day was?
89 to 50 in a week.
Yeah.
So.
So, that was a, it was a big blow, but I, you know, we're pretty confident that Rob's getting on top of things and will work things out, and, but like Bo had mentioned, it's a, it's a staffing issue that's been coming along, and we've seen it statewide, is our staffing shortages, and this is one of those areas where staffing shortages will really come back and haunt a facility, and so DOCR has got that in their, you know, you're going to need this number of staff or X number of inmates, and, you know, and proper training and protocols and procedures to go along with that, and all that, you know, when you have turnovers, high-rated turnovers, that training sometimes doesn't get completely taken, taken on, so.
Well, we raised the wages to $20 an hour. That was a huge help. They got applicants and people that are interested in it.
They had like five hires, didn't they?
Yeah.
And, and Rob indicated it was, it was better quality applicants than what they had been seeing in the past, so that was a positive move, and, and something we're seeing around the state from facilities that, you know, I think Pierce County just raised theirs, Cass County did it about the same time we did.
Grand Forks did it.
Grand Forks did it, happening all over the state.
I think we need to raise even more.
Yeah, yeah.
Boy, what's $20 an hour? It's 40 grand a year, I mean, that's a, that's a really tough job, 40 grand a year.
Yeah.
And I know we got to three hundred teachers for, and we're not paying them enough, so.
I agree with that. A hundred percent.
And I think we need to move it up some more. Well, at the end of the day, I mean, it's basically, they're giving us the opportunity to get some new staff in and get them trained.
Right.
And then hopefully, if we show progress in the three months, correct, then we can apply and move the cap up, and if we've done our job correctly, Rob's done his job correctly, then we'll have quality staff, have them trained up, and they won't probably move the cap, I mean, that's all. They've got a new gentleman out to DOCR by the name of Steve Hall, and he ran Burley Mort, the college jail, for a number of years, and he's not as old as I am, we're too far off, so he's coming to 26th of this month, and he's going to stay through the weekend, and I think he'll be a huge help. I think he brings a lot of knowledge, and I think he's going to help everything a lot of course, so we're very interested in having him come, so.
So while it was a setback, I think it's a setback that in the long run will be for the better, we'll come out of the thing better than ever. It is a 90-day hard 50 cap, and then from there, we can go, I think, is it 75 or 80?
80.
We go to 80 for another 180 days, and then after that, we can apply for, you know, the full licensure of the 105 and be granted, and then.
And old Lance Anderson, he's above Steve Hall, and he, well, he's generally in charge of the jail, and what's going on, he told me that Steve Hall would be a big help to you, and he was very happy, he was with Lance on that meeting, and I think that'll work very well.
I think so.
For what it's worth, I'd just like to give a little kudos to Sheriff Nelson for making it work. He's had deputies running all over the state for it.
Yeah.
So he deserves a thank you if he got a call later.
I'd tag him in that.
Yeah. So with that, it is 6 o'clock, and we have to close the commission meeting, and nope, just continuing into the hearing.
Yep, we're good.
Okay, good enough. So the next item on our agenda at 6 o'clock, we have a request. A request for a tax exemption from North Dakota Petroleum. Make sure you've got that. President, uh, North Dakota Petroleum Equipment Incorporated. Letter from Elizabeth Black, our tax director. We have with us, uh, Mr. Joe Gleason, president of North Dakota Petroleum Equipment. Welcome, Mr. Gleason, also president is superintendent of schools, Devils Lake Schools, Matt Bocky. Matt, thanks for coming.
Thanks for coming.
We have, uh, letters from the Department of Commerce indicating that, uh. The business will be primary sector business. And a little bit about the expansion that North Dakota Petroleum is looking to do east of town. And they're here asking for a hundred percent tax exemption for five years. Mr. Gleason, you wanna talk a little bit, give everybody kind of a, a brief floor one on what exactly North Dakota Petroleum Equipment is?
Yeah, we're, uh, we're sales installation, inspection, engineering in the petroleum industry, mainly focused on underground fuel system and propane systems. And we work, mainly North Dakota, Minnesota now, but we have, we're expanding some into Montana and South Dakota as well, and every year, that just keeps getting bigger. Part of the province here is eight and a half acres out there, just east of Dakota Driving, on Highway Two. And we're putting up, uh, just under twenty-five thousand square feet of facilities. Uh, one building specifically for manufacturing. And, uh, expanding into a few different services. One of them will be DOT cargo tank inspections, which, uh, the state, North Dakota and Minnesota are actually lacking quite a bit right now. There's nobody, the closest company right now is actually Fargo. And they're not doing a whole lot like they used to, so there's been a lot of businesses asking for something to get that off the ground, so. We're gonna put in a specific bay and whatever building specific for that purpose. We're also, uh, expanding again to a few different things, ASME R stamp, which is a repair. Or welding qualification for repair and alteration pressure vessels. We really have no competition, uh, anywhere in this half of the state for that either.
How many employees?
How many are gonna hire, how many hired already?
How many plan to hire?
Over the next five years, uh, the goal is to get to about twenty to twenty-five.
Twenty to twenty-five.
Yeah. We hired five people this year already.
These are all in positions?
Correct.
Yeah.
Our, uh, our welding positions are a little unique, it's, it's, uh, our welding position's on the higher end of the P scale, you know, with certified high-pressure piping welding.
All T grade?
Uh, no, we do a lot of, uh, stake welding as well. There'll be some flex for, once you get into some of the manufacturing stuff, there'll be some sub bar. But, you know, our welders right now are making twenty-eight to thirty-two dollars an hour full benefits, and they get a lot of hours in some of the way now, so, you know, we got a couple of them that are gonna be welding six agents.
Sixteen years.
Yeah. And a lot of these guys, uh, well, actually, I've talked with Matt, and we're hoping to maybe get, uh, take advantage of some of the primary sector business stuff through the Department of Commerce. And work with the VOTech at the high school, and, you know, there's some incentives, uh, with the primary sector. To go after and try and get some internships out of VOTech and keep some of them kids locally, and there's also some other incentives where the state will pay, uh, up to seventy-five percent of a kid's, um. College tuition if he agrees to come back and work for the company that got him going for two or three years, I believe it is. So the goal is, uh, to work with Matt and the, and the VOTech there and, and try and get some of those kids on board and keep them around the area and create some, some good paying jobs.
Cause I read in the thing here, at some point in time, you're gonna start one of the plants to start actually building vessels too then?
That's the goal.
That's the goal. It takes a while to get to that point, dude.
It's been a goal for a long time, but it's like, it's becoming more and more realistic, so.
The building of fifty, I'll bet.
We have three buildings, one's a hundred and fifty, well, a hundred by hundred and fifty, fifteen thousand square feet, the second one is forty by two hundred, which is perfect for a assembly line type s- system. So that's eight thousand square feet, and then we have another just, uh, storage building, which will be thirty by sixty.
Would you hold great ground on that in the way?
The forty by two hundred will be ordered in September.
This next level.
We ordered the one hundred by one fifty, uh, two months ago, I believe, and it'll get here at the end of February. That's how far out the steel building manufacturers are. And I said, I just gotta get this thing coming, cuz it'll be another year, I mean, if I went, I could wait it, it'd just take another year. We're gonna get to concrete down this fall though, so we can start working on it this winter. The smaller.
Are you putting those thick buildings or?
Steel.
Yeah.
It'll be twenty.
Well, I know the hundred by one fifty is steel. I don't know, they're longer to be sold.
And, uh, the new one's twenty-six foot, uh, tall, the forty by two hundred and the thirty by sixty are twenty-five foot tall, they all have over increases.
Mr. Bocky, how, how much capacity do we have in welding classes at the high school, twenty or?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, typically, within our classes in general, um, I would say it's about twenty, but within those classes, I say it's even less than that, probably about sixteen to eighteen.
Really?
Yeah. But again, that's with our program currently where it's at, so.
And after that, they have to go off to science or something like that to get their two-year for the associates, plus you're doing specialty welding, so I'm sure they have to do additional training.
Typically, I mean, it's something you could learn on the job over time, but, you know, a lot of our welders that come out of Gondola, Tenon, or down in South Dakota, I think it's Lake Area Tech.
Usually they can modify their certification.
Not necessarily, they still have to take welding certification tests for us.
Right.
We have our welding qualification procedures. But.
Then it's a whole other.
Some of them can, I mean, some of them can come out of college and pass that test, but some of them.
A, a whole other level of, of qualifications when you start dealing with that high-pressure pipe welding.
Correct.
Yeah. That's, uh.
So our codes, you know, will fall under, uh, ASME B thirty-one, which is high-pressure piping, and then you have, uh, ASME Section eight, Section nine for pressure vessels. And basically, the repair and alteration of pressure vessels is, uh, not quite as difficult to get, it's, it's fairly difficult to get, it's a, it's a time-consuming process. I've actually been waiting, I'm thinking on week seven right now for the test plates, so my guys can take the test. So, but, you know, that's kind of everything right now, if it's steel-related, you're waiting.
Right.
You're waiting or paying, or both.
So the township was on board with it, schools aligned with it?
You know, in the past, uh, the school system has never opposed anything such as this, um, and moving forward, we're always in favor of, uh, business expansions and. And such as, I would hope the businesses would be in favor of school expansion as well down the road, or whenever it happens, uh, you know. We wanna support the business community, cuz it's good for the community, it's good for the Devils Lake area, um, so, yeah, I mean, just like that, again, I would hope the community would support the school system and that. Uh, cuz we all work together, and it's, it's good for the community, it's good for all of us. Candy, I gotta say, I love the red, white, and black with the nail polish today. Put a school system writer, school writer on the corner, I just gotta say, I love the, I love the, the school spirit, so.
Yeah, that was, uh, baseball.
Oh, there we go, perfect.
And looking at it, I, I, I couldn't pull it up again, but when I was reading it, I, it was when we got the packets. The, the, the primary sector property tax exemption, it appears as though the city has consistently given out a five-year one hundred. And I think it's only reasonable from our county perspective, if we're gonna do something so that we have competition, you know, whether you're building out, out east of town, or if you're building in the, the industrial park that we have, continuity of what we're doing. Just so it's, you know, cuz there's only so much industrial park land left in that too, so, I mean, at least that's my perspective.
I'll make a motion, may I prove it? Okay.
Five years, a hundred percent.
Second.
I'll, I'll second.
Move in second, then we'll go ahead and approve the five-year, a hundred percent tax exemption request. Further discussion? I think it's very exciting.
Yeah.
Just, you know, i- i- in that whole welding and concept and manufacturing within our, our community, they are expanding, that fantastic, you know.
I think you're on the right path too in saying, in, in saying that work with the VOTech, try to keep, you know, because that's the easiest way you're gonna, gonna fill jobs, is to find people that wanna stay here and, that are qualified to stay here.
We've been, we've been having to hunt down all over the country lately, basically trying to find people that like to hunt fish.
Yeah.
So it, uh.
You got a lot better chances having somebody that's gonna stick around here if they got family here and they like it here already, than having to pull somebody from God knows where.
Like the last time when we did Tronsen's.
We did an annual payment?
Mm-hmm.
And how much was that?
They paid a hundred dollars a year for five years.
Is this not?
When we did Tronsen's.
On the application itself, if you look.
They gotta reapply every year?
No.
No, no. It's just that when, when Tronsen's did that last one.
You gotta reapply with his state or something, I read.
On a grand annual payment, yeah.
Where does the hundred go?
They quit, Lisa puts it in lieu of the taxes.
Payments in lieu of taxes is what it states on the. No problem.
Fair. That, that's, that's part of the, part of the standard procedure, basically, okay?
We might have to draw new rules if you.
We'll make, we'll make you a trade here, right?
Well, we, we'd have to, you know, approve the initial motion, or amend the initial motion.
Essentially a friendly amendment, so if he's fine with amending his motion, I took the second, so I'm fine with amending that motion.
Okay.
Lawyers, damn.
And this is great.
Okay. Motion and a second did to approve the tax exemption request with a hundred dollar annual payment. In lieu of taxes. Thank you. And beginning in.
Beginning in.
Twenty, twenty.
So when, what was the final project of the TV?
Beginning in twenty-two?
Are you planning on having all the buildings up next year?
Yeah, so we will probably be about this time. By the time we get everything kind of settled in over there.
You gotta put it down as twenty-two then.
Well, twenty-two wouldn't have all the improvements because it's a February fifteenth date, correct? So, and it would only be, you'd only get the exemption on anything that's sitting out there next year on the fifteenth of February, improvement-wise, if it was for the twenty-two tax year. Right.
Do you plan to have all three buildings this next year already?
Next, but in twenty twenty-two, yeah.
Yes, so everything would be standing in February on the date on tw- in, for the twenty-three tax year and twenty twenty. Shh, no, sorry, no.
Twenty-two.
Next year's twenty-two. So, uh, it would be for the twenty-three tax year.
Right.
So pay the twenty-two taxes.
So you would be paying the twenty-two taxes, whatever you have up.
Sure.
And then you would get, just so you can get the full exemption on what, when you get the whole project in.
And you get every five years, twenty-three through twenty-eight.
Twenty-three through twenty-eight, yeah.
A hundred per.
And so you have some property taxes at hand, whatever's already established.
Right, because that will help you on the setback, because you know there's gonna be setbacks on this building, so. Well, and we're just crossing fingers, what we're saying does show up in February, and then we can get, you know, the goal is to get the. The building that showed up in February has had, has had all my offices, and, I mean, that's where, it's got their corporate office there, so we, that's where we really need to hire some people as well, so.
You're looking at that, you're probably looking at the six-month setback.
I'm just being.
No, I know.
You're not gonna trust the buildings either, either, until it rolls in on the truck, that's how it always is.
Yeah.
Twenty, twenty-three through twenty-eight?
Perfect.
That work for everybody?
Yeah, as, as long as we're stating it correctly, I think we are.
Any objections?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if, if I may, and I apologize, I've only been to give this thesis of what's been said. Uh, Mr. Gleason, I really appreciate you coming in, and it's such a pleasure to hear that people are growing, accepting the community, and I hope that this goes through for you, because I think that it's great for the community. But my objection to the last one that came in, uh, was on the county's end, I feel we have no parameters by which to, uh, sort of quantitatively make determinations, you know, we have no light to stand on. If ever we were to deny someone for the fact that we didn't use any standards to approve people, uh, so I'm not gonna vote against this, but I, I want it to be known that I, I intend to abstain from this vote. And it's not because I don't believe in what you're doing or the project, uh, it's just because I believe that Ramsey County needs to do a better job and have better stated parameters. Uh, so that the only barrier to getting a tax exemption is not just whoever happens to walk in the door and ask for it, because I think that's kind of how we, on our end, conducted ourselves. Uh, so I will abstain, but like I said, I appreciate what you're doing, and I hope that passes for you, uh, but it is my intention to abstain from the vote of mental that I wanted to mention.
Duly noted. Anybody else? Questions, comments? Proceed with the vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I just do have a roll call, will.
Okay, we'll do that, roll call, please.
Brown?
Aye.
Leipon?
Aye.
Polk?
Aye.
Aye.
And Lucas is abstaining, okay? Got it.
Got it. Motion passed, tax exemption approved. Congratulations, best of luck to you, Mr. Gleason.
Thank you. And thank you, uh, Candy and Beth isn't here, but they helped me out a lot on the paperwork that I did, but get it lined up, attention.
To get some.
How often are those, uh, tankers inspected, over the road, tankers?
There's, there's multiple different inspections, some of them are every year, just, you know, visual, and then there's fleet tests every five years, so.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, thank you. I have a question too, so. We have tank inspections that we always have to take down in Fargo for the military, are you gonna be able to do those inspections?
Are those DOT inspections?
Yeah.
It's awesome, that'd be great for us, cuz we're spending.
That'll probably be by the time that.
I mean, we'll have to talk, because there's a lot of paperwork that's involved with us.
Tell them why.
Not a picture.
Not take business away from Fargo, but there's a lot of travel.
Well, it makes sense to you that we're leaving it here.
They're gonna take business from us? It's our, our idea or thing, but it's, it's happening.
Yeah.
Anything else for the good of the order? Any other announcements? I think that's good. Motion through adjourned. We are adjourned. Thank you all for attending.